Welcome to this meeting of the Farmington School Board. Please rise and join me in saying the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Once again, welcome. Our first item, as usual, on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda. The Agenda was sent out last week. Everyone should have had a chance to take a look and see if there's any items that either need to be moved or considered. Are there any items or questions about the Agenda? If not, can I get a motion to pass the Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Colet. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an Agenda. First item on that Agenda is good news and Superintendent update. Superintendent Berg?
Thank you Chair Christensen and members of the Board and members of the community. This will be a little bit, I tend to get winded, but this will be a little bit shorter tonight again because we have a couple of our buildings sharing, so we'll save some of the good information for Mr. Nelson and Ms. Byken from Meadowview and Dodge tonight. And then just a quick update, we also had on the Agenda to get an update from Ms. Magnuson from Aiken Road, and she was unable to make it tonight. So we're going to push that one back until November. So if you were expecting and excited to hear about Aiken Road, you'll just have to wait another month, it's coming. Before we get much farther, I do want to send a big shout out and a big thank you to really our community. Over the last month, our community's done an awesome job of supporting a multitude of fundraisers across our district. So whether it be fun runs, fun nights and things like that, a majority of our buildings have kind of taken on some of that, the PTPs, and have raised just a significant amount of money to help those learning communities. And I've had the opportunity to be involved in a couple of different fun runs and stop over there and then see some of the things that they've bought. And it's just a huge, huge value add. So I just want to say thank you and just acknowledge all the stuff that's going on to really help support our buildings at that building level. Want to give another quick reminder about Patriotic Day. I know about a month ago, I reintroduced the fact that we're bringing that back and we have a Patriotic Committee that Chair Christensen is on that's working really, really hard. Is member Dettinger on there too? I didn't know that. I only get the emails from Chair Christensen, so I apologize for missing that. But that community's been hard at work bringing that in-person event back, back into our community. And just as a reminder, that's on November 10th at Farmington High School. The community dinner begins at 5:00 PM and then the program's going to begin at 7:00 PM. And the keynote speaker is Space Force Brigadier General Timothy Seba, and he is a Farmington High School graduate. So it's pretty cool to not only have an active member of the military who's fairly, fairly high ranking, but also an FHS grad. So it makes that even more special. I know that Kennedy and Michael are going to hit on this a little bit, but fall season is coming to an end, even though it didn't feel like it this weekend, fall is upon us. And that means majority of our teams are heading into section competitions. So we'll probably give a larger update in November, once those have all kind of concluded. And then I just want to do kind of like an advertisement real quick. I know that, you know, we've talked at different times at the district level just about the number of openings that we have across the district. And I thought, since I didn't have a lot, this would be a good opportunity to share with our community that if you're looking for a position, or you're looking for a part-time position, we have numerous full-time, part-time and substitute positions open across the district, specifically in our paraprofessional group and our food service. Neither one of those groups are fully staffed at this point in time. I know that Marshall Lines is looking for bus drivers, so if you're looking for another way to engage and get that, I don't know if it's Level C licensure or something like that, that's pretty cool to have, so you can get that opportunity. And again, if you're looking for something that's more flexible and have a four-year college degree, we are looking for substitutes. And that's not just a Farmington thing, it's a kind of across the nation, the metro area. But just to kind of give people an idea, we had 17 Unfield positions today across the district. And so that means that, that was in paraprofessionals and in our classrooms. That just means that other people have to fill in and either give up some other time that they use to dedicate to other things, or taking people out of other positions to do that. So if you're looking for other ways to help that may not necessarily be, you know, donations and things like that, you can also jump in and you can work with us, or you can pick and choose with some of those substitute positions. So if you're looking for more information, there is additional positions and things like that on our homepage under Human Resources. So Chair Christensen, that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you Superintendent Berg. Next item on the Agenda is the Student School Board Member Update. Do you guys have a preference, or I can just call on Kennedy, or I can call on Mike?
For sure.
Go ahead, Michael.
Just a heads up, this will be a little short. We've had two long weekends, so not a lot's been happening in the district. But what has been happening is Farmington football. So this last Wednesday, the Tigers went up against Wayzetta, and while we lost, we're looking forward for the section game this Friday against Shakopee, 7 o'clock. Be there, show up, show some Tiger pride. I think the theme, I could be wrong on this, is camo and hunting. So any students listening, make sure to adhere to the theme.
And just make sure you show up at Shakopee.
Yes, Shakopee. Yep. In volleyball news, girls volleyball will go up against Lakeville South this Wednesday at 7:00 PM for their start to their sections. And last week, as we all know, was MEA break. With a three-day week, most students took off time to refresh themselves and came back today, kind of prepared to take in the first five-day week we've had in a long while and get ready for an even better week, kind of ready to, after refreshing themselves, ready to apply again. But I can speak from personal experience that the sleep schedule might be a little hard to get back into. Long weekends. Go to Kennedy.
Awesome. Well, kind of echoing a little bit what Michael said, it's been pretty relaxing as a Farmington student. We had a lot going on with homecoming last month, and so we're kind of on a little bit of a hiatus, just chilling around, especially with our flex day that we had two Fridays ago and then going into that MEA. So it's kind of a nice break to go off from that typical five-day week that we have. One thing that is kind of on people is we have finals for high school in a month, so it's kind of fun to get done with trimester one, but also a little nerve-wracking just because it is finals. Also, we have a few clubs going on at the high school right now. Many have started back up since we kind of got more into the school year. One I'd like to share with you is a newer club. It's called the Puzzle Club, which was established last school year. This year, the meetings are being held at 7:40 every Friday morning, and there will be snacks there. So if you're in high school and looking for a fun way to chill and start your morning, then Friday, Friday Morning Puzzle Club is for you. And then lastly, the high school theater department has production. Their show is called All's Well in Roswell. It's coming up in mid-November on the 17th, the 18th and the 19th. All showings are at 7 o'clock. So be sure to show up and make an appearance. These students have put a lot of work and effort into what they're going to be showing for you all. And that's all I have. Back to you.
Very good. The next item on the Agenda is the Consent Agenda. As a reminder, the Consent Agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with a single motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the Consent Agenda and it will be placed or be acted on separately. Does anyone have an item for the, to talk about on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dettinger, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item. Let me get back to... Oh my gosh, that was a long Consent Agenda. I remember looking at it, but I didn't realize so long. Reports and Communications. Our first item is building updates from Meadowview and Dodge Middle School. Ms. Byken and Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Becky Byken, Principal at Meadowview Elementary. Give me just one second here, I'll get this all set up. All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share a little bit about Meadowview with all of you. When I was putting together this presentation, I started with our strategic plan. We just, our staff just put this together. We had about a dozen people show up, and we did it in late August. And I wasn't sure at the time when I scheduled it if this was going to be a good time to do it, or if we should have maybe done it at the beginning of the summer. But I was so glad that we did it right before we came back, because I feel like doing it so close to the start of the year, I feel like I'm very connected to it. And going through that process, I feel like when we were considering, what is, like, who are we? Who is our, like, what is our identity? And what is our purpose here? Late August, we did it on the 18th of August, was the perfect time to do it, because I, like I said, I feel very connected. We had a lot of staff that participated, and I think they feel very connected too. So if you want to take a look at this, I'm going to read through it and talk to you about the pieces that I feel have really been guiding us as of late. And I would say almost especially after the last couple of years, where we've been and where our kids are as we re-enter this new year, and having so much more normalcy where we're at. I think, I feel like we're on the right track here. "The mission of Meadowview Elementary School, an inclusive, nurturing learning community rooted in the strengths and aspirations of each learner, is to ensure the growth of the whole child and equip them with the skills to be compassionate, resilient contributors to the world community by and through authentic learning experiences, honoring the diverse needs of each student, strong collaborative community partnerships, amplifying learner voice and reflection as part of the learning process." I feel like there's been so much reflection in the past couple of years. We've learned a lot as we've gone through this process. We're seeing things now, as we come back to school, things are coming out sideways in some ways, right? And in other ways, we're just so proud that we are here, we're so happy to be here. And I just keep on telling myself and everybody else, like, we're going to be okay, we're going to get through this. And so one step at a time. I think the things that stand out to me the most is I've always said to my staff that they're really good, I always use the phrase, "at loving them up right where they're at", "at loving our kids up right where they're at." And you could definitely feel how important that was as we were working through the strategic plan, the piece of being nurturing for our kids. And just being there and meeting them where they're at and doing the best we can to put one foot in front of the other moving forward has really been the theme. And I feel like we're off to such a strong start. Sometimes in education, we get stuck in a bit of a deficit mindset, and we worry so much about where we wish we were, or where we're going next, that we don't stop to just look at where we are right now and take responsibility of putting one foot in front of the other. And sometimes as educators, we do that too. We worry about where our kids are not yet, or should be and could be. And that has only been amplified over the last couple of years. And so you'll see again and again in my presentation, the words "growth." You'll see things about being strengths-focused, because I really believe that we do ourselves, it's better for ourselves if we focus on where are we right now, what strengths can we build on? And yes, of course, we've absolutely got growth to do, but focusing on the growth is the biggest, is the biggest piece. And that means acknowledging right where you're at right now, accepting it, and then moving forward from there. All right. So the other day, when I was walking around, just chatting with people in the morning, I saw this in a teacher's room. And so it's, I know it's hard to see, but in the image, I took a picture of it, because I felt like that really encompassed what we've talked about again and again, and what we continue to remind ourselves as we make our way out of the last couple of years. It says, "I belong here, I will show kindness, I will succeed, I will learn from my mistakes, I will try harder today than yesterday, and I will explore new ideas." And so we're really just focused on empowering our kids, empowering our staff to look at things and to really root themselves in the growth of every learner, not necessarily the proficiency, right? We have kiddos that are coming into first grade, for example, that are not typically where a first grader would be at this time, or typically where a second grader would be at this time, or a third grader. And that's okay. We're going to continue to empower them right from where they're at and do the very best that we can to meet them. And our teachers are strong and they're able to do that. And we do that by personalizing our learning environments right there in the classroom, and then celebrating that growth one step at a time, so that we excite our kids and make them feel proud of their work. One of the things we talk about often is we have to do this through relationships. So I don't know if you've ever seen, I want to say it's Rita Pierce. She talks about how every child needs a champion, and she kind of makes a joke about the fact that kids don't learn from people they don't like. Now, I don't know if that's actually true or not, but we certainly know that kids, when kids feel like the educator's in front of them, really see them and care about who they are as people, that makes the world of difference on whether or not that kiddo is going to take in that information and hear what is being taught. Because at the end of the day, it's not about what's being taught, it's about what's being received and what's being heard and what's being learned. And if a kiddo comes into class and they sit down and they feel stressed out and anxious all the time, they're not going to hear the message that's being delivered, and therefore they're not going to learn from it. And so we know that the most important work that we do when kids show up at our doorstep every day is to build relationships with them and really get to know who they are as individuals, because that's how, that's how we all learn, when we feel connected and when we feel like our input matters, and who we are as a person and what we bring to the table makes a difference. So that's really what our PD is focused, that's part of what our PD is focused on this year. That's my continual message, strengths-focused, growth, right where they're at, and moving one step forward. In terms of academically, we're really rooted in literacy. We know that we're learning more and more and more. My staff has been learning more about the science of reading and really understanding how students learn to read. And of course, when we say that, we're learning about how the typical student learns to read. But we are really, we've really immersed ourselves in that work and have been working with some outside support. And I also have tons of support from my title and my AdSis people to really help us break it down and start looking at what we can do to bring in better screeners and better diagnostics, so that we can do a better job of meeting kids exactly where they are and helping them to put one foot in front of the other, and grow those literacy skills and those decoding skills. So that's really our, our main academic focus this year, that we've really been surrounding ourselves with, with work for each of our PD days. The other part of it is, we are actually in our third year of PBIS, which PBIS, if you're not familiar with it, is basically a framework that is put into place to build better relationships, to focus on the positive, and to make sure that we're consistently communicating what we expect from our kids. Oftentimes, we think in our minds, "Oh, they should know that by now." Well, that's not necessarily true. It's always fair to make sure that we're consistently communicating our expectations. And if that means lining up right before we walk out, we remind kiddos of the expectations, because that's kind and that's fair, and because they really do want to do what is expected of them. But sometimes they forget, and that's human. So the reason we're in our third year of PBIS is because it's supposed to be a two-year stint, but due to COVID and the fact that we were digital, they allowed us to do this for a third year, so that we can continue to get that support. The last piece is, you know, I mentioned relationships in the last slide. One of our main PD focuses this year was rooting ourselves in morning meeting. Morning meeting focuses, has four parts to it. It takes place in 15 to 20 minutes, and each part is super intentional. I've asked each staff member to set aside 15 minutes to connect with their kids, ask questions, get to know who they are as individuals. Every single day, everybody is part of that greeting, which means that every day, every child in that classroom that is there that day hears their name again and again in a positive way. This is, and you sit in a circle, and that also has purpose. A circle's equal, everybody has an equal role when they sit there and when they contribute. Everybody has an opportunity to share, and then there's an activity that engages that classroom together in doing something fun, because that is a need of students, that is a need for all of us. We need to have some fun in order to connect with the people around us. And then there's news and announcements, and that's to set them up for success for the day, so that, so that they know what to expect, because we all feel better when we kind of have a guide and know what's coming next. Again, and it can be academically or socially focused. The activities that you choose can also be review of material that was covered the day before, to support that, that learning as well. Socially, emotionally, we also have counselors that do lessons. I have a counselor and a half, so I have a 1.5 FTE allocated to do classroom lessons. They work incredibly hard, and they go into every grade level to focus on classroom lessons that are rooted in a lot of different leadership capacities. We know that kids have a lot of skills that they need to build in order to be successful academically, things like being able to cooperate in a group and work together. So how might that look? So they do things like that. My full-time counselor is actually my primary contact for PBIS as well, and so the two work together very seamlessly. And then, like I said, we are in our third year of PBIS for the grant, and that is intended to just make sure that we are doing the best we can to communicate what is necessary to have a consistent nurturing environment, and to make sure that we're being fair in communicating the expectations of how we want things to look in each environment throughout the building, so that kids can be as successful as possible. And then also posting those as reminders, simple things, like when you go to the bathroom, you know, "Go, wash your hands, and go back to class." Just those little reminders, so that we can continuously go back to those when we notice that somebody is kind of falling off the path. So again, thank you for the opportunity to talk about Meadowview. I could go on for days and days about being proud of my kids and my staff and just love what I do. So thank you for the opportunity.
Chair Christensen, members of the Board, it's an honor to be here tonight and thank you for the time. I'm Andy Nelson, Principal at Dodge Middle School. And I'm going to share some similar messages and some similar things happening at Dodge, starting with our strategic plan. So again, this summer, as a staff, in July, we had about 10 people come in, and it was a really energizing session facilitated by Superintendent Berg, talking about who we are and who we want to be as Dodge Middle School. And I am going to read this and highlight a couple of things in this, in this mission statement and these defining characteristics. But the mission of Dodge Middle School, a flexible, learning-centered community that transforms the educational system. And I'm going to stop there. We were very intentional about words in this mission statement. And we said "learning-centered" and not "learner-centered." We all, as adults and students, want to be learning, and that's what our focus is. We also want to be flexible in how we meet the needs, the unique needs of each of our learners that come through our doors. We also want to think differently about education and push that envelope and transform the experience we give our learners that walk through our doors. It's to serve the uniqueness of each learner and to cultivate individual academic and personal growth. So we want our kiddos not only attaining their academic goals, but also their personal goals and their social-emotional development throughout middle school. And those defining characteristics, right? Becky spoke of this, but this notion of reflection, reflection is so critical for the learning process, whether you are an 11-year-old, a 15-year-old, or an adult learner. That reflection piece, that gives knowledge meaning, right? And we want to instill that growth mindset, not only in our learners, but also within our staff. The courage to explore diverse ideas and diverse perspectives, empathetic human connections, right? Understanding each other's stories as a learning community and having empathy for each other is super important. Curiosity within the learning design and process, and then obviously collaboration. We want our learners to collaborate and continue to foster and develop those skills. There's a picture of our wonderful staff, so I stand here before you representing them and all 750-year-old learners at Dodge Middle School. So I'm going to talk about learning design at Dodge Middle School, social-emotional supports, and then community engagement are kind of the three buckets that we're focused on tonight. That picture's a little small in the middle, but that was taken in one of our sixth-grade science classrooms. And it, to me, it's just the definition of middle school and what middle school should be about, right? We got the learner there that is really pumped up about what's going on. One of them's doing kind of a silly face there, but this is what happens in our classrooms every single day, right? Excitement, energy, learning happening. And kind of the foundation of that, we worked and we're talking to staff a lot in our departments about competency-based learning and depths of knowledge, right? Or competency-based reporting and depths of knowledge. And it goes hand in hand, but I really like to focus on the learning design, right? The reporting, we can talk a lot about, you know, we are using a competency-based reporting system, but pushing our kids to the higher levels of depths of knowledge, right? The creation, taking and applying skills, some of those justify, explain, and creating learning experiences that get us to higher depths of knowledge. We talked to staff about, that does not mean that lessons can't focus on a Level 1 or 2, right? The skill building that we need to get to those higher depths of knowledge. But we want to create experiences for kids that really put that knowledge to use. And then, like I said, we are focused on a competency-based learning reporting system, right? So making sure that our learners understand those rubrics, making sure that our community and parents understand those rubrics and are doing a lot of work around that. In addition to that, we are focused on, every course is reporting out on personal skills for success. So collaboration, perseverance, communication, and I'm going to forget one, but we have four of them that we're reporting out on. Every single core class, or every, I'm sorry, every single class is reporting out on those. And then when we get to our transitions class, they are specifically reporting out on those personal skills for success, which are really closely aligned to the profile of a lifelong learner that the district is focused on. Other things that we have within our learning design or supports that we have, each, twice a week, on a normal week, a five-day week, we run a flex time, and that runs in the morning for a half hour. We're about learner choice around this, so kids choosing what they might need support in, or enrichment in, or a community offering. So we start with, through our Tiger Connections and those advisors, talking to our kids about what are good choices. We use a program called Flex Schedular that they're, they go in and pick an offering, and then they report to that offering during that time. We have, we do work with kids around, if we're not making the correct choice, right? Talking to them and coaching them around, you know, making maybe some different choices if we're noticing some things as an advisor. And then just additional learning supports. We have a reading interventionist, a math interventionist, and an innovative design and learning specialist that helps support our learners. Variety of structures around that, a reading and math interventionist team within clusters of learners, and they also have time within their day to pull small groups and provide intervention around reading and math. And then Tim Schlotter, an innovative design and learning specialist, supports learning for all students. He's got clusters within his transitions classes that he also helps support, kind of that personalized learning. Kids that, within a competency, may want to go to extending, helps support some of that, that work. Social-emotional supports, as a, as a middle school principal, this is something I'm really passionate about. Adolescents, 11 to 14, 15-year-olds, there's a tremendous amount of social-emotional growth that happens in that time, and something that we are very intentional about through various supports. The base of that really starts with our school counselors. They do a lot of work, kind of a tiered approach, right? So much like Becky articulated, they go in and they push into classrooms and do lessons, kind of that tier one. So right now, they're talking about stress and coping mechanisms, right? So they, we start with a tier-one approach, and then we have learner support groups, small groups that our counselors facilitate. And then obviously, Ms. Hogan and Ms. Slater support the individual learners, so they have individual times within their day to pull learners and connect with them. We also have a behavior specialist and interventionist, Ms. Tara Lean. She provides intervention support, has done things like restorative circles with kids, with groups of students, and does a lot of work to support that social-emotional growth. We have focused on this year, these Tiger Stripes. And we are very intentional about coming back to some of our core values of community, empathy and purpose as a building, and frame that out through our transitions course, which every student has. But we tied that back to some building expectations. What does it look like in certain spaces to demonstrate the What does it look like in certain spaces to demonstrate these core values? And our staff are acknowledging the positive in our kiddos when they are, you know, quote-unquote "meeting our expectations" or "doing the right thing." And these kids have them on their iPads in their lockers. It's been really, really positive. Our TC, our Tiger Connections teachers, also collect these just as a data piece around how many positive affirmations are we giving our learners. That brings me to Tiger Connections. So three days a week, when we run flex, every single student comes into the building right away in the morning. We have advisory. The idea behind that is a strong personal connection. Every student has an adult in the building that they can connect to. And then, as I said, we are running a transitions course at each grade level. Seven mindsets, so some social-emotional learning is part of that, but also, we call it academic coaching, right? So developing plans with our learners around where might you need support, you know, who do you need to connect with as staff? And then, yeah, academic coaching and that social-emotional. Learner reflection is part of that also. So I'm going to get to our student-led conferences in a second, which we just finished up. But each of our learners completed a reflection on how the year is going, and that was, they facilitated that at conferences and set a goal for the remainder of the year. And then, family and community engagement, just multiple ways we try to and do engage the community and our families, starting with our social media. So we have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram that parents are following and families are following, and we try to communicate out the great things that are happening on a day-to-day basis within the building. The Dodge Dish is another community engagement that is written by me, and that is our parent newsletter, once a week typically, principal message, and then just other logistical announcements that are happening in the building. Parent ambassadors is a group that involves our parents that, you know, want volunteer opportunities within the building. We have a group that meets quarterly, and it's also a feedback group for me as a building administrator around hearing from our parents and our families of what's going well and potentially what we need to change. Learner-led conferences, I hit on that a little bit, but we did just finish our learner-led conferences for the fall here. There's a little picture, it's kind of small up there, but each, as I said, each learner went through a reflection about how the year is going. The idea was that a learner would facilitate that conversation with their family member and their Tiger Connections advisor. And then, we did a hybrid because we heard feedback that parents also wanted to connect with other teachers, so there was some drop in time as part of that conference time. And then, the last thing that's new this year, that comes back to the community empathy purpose, but reaching out, how do we communicate positives home? We have identified, or we have printed postcards with every single learner in the building and have a staff member kind of organizing that. And our teachers are sending positive postcards home to, in theory, to hit every learner in the building at some point in the year. So every Friday, we have someone that sends out a reminder, and the feedback from families on that has been very positive and appreciative as they get those messages from school, so. Thank you. Questions for Becky or I?
I have more of a comment. It's great to see that our counselors in Dodge are very active with our students because I know, just from a personal level, many families that, you know, were affected by COVID or whatnot, that the counselors really went into overdrive and really gave students tools to put in their toolbox to help them manage anxiety or stress or transitional situations. So I appreciate their work within our student community and bodies to help students with that so they can, like Becky said, go into the classroom and have that not be the main focus of that particular moment in the classroom and freeze up time for them to learn. So I think the work that they've been doing, whether it's in middle school, high school, or elementary, I think their work is very, very critical to a lot of children to help them deal through stuff so they can become good learners and move forward in their education. So thank them for us.
Absolutely.
Can I, Becky, can I ask you a question for follow-up? You talked about counselor lessons. How do you guys identify what those lessons are that they go into the classrooms and kind of address?
That's a great question. So we, they focus on one theme a month, and so like cooperation was one that I used an example of. So that's what they focus their lessons around then for that month is cooperation. So that's how they usually identify them. But they also, like, take feedback from teachers. So they're seeing something that is repetitive, like empathy comes to mind because that's a, kind of a newer thing, or not a newer thing, it's one of the newer words that was added because of a need. So they also are responsive to teachers and supporting with, whether that's a small group or whether that's a full grade-level lesson, you know, it's not always for everybody, but that's how they've been determining it. So we have like nine themes of the year that we typically follow, but like I said, those have changed throughout my eight years there based on feedback from teachers when certain areas are needing more support.
Just a, you had mentioned that the PBIS expires, sorry, Ms. Byken, that PBIS expires after two or three years. What happens next? I mean, it looks like a grant program, so do you apply to a new grant? Is there a new system that comes in, or do you take the learnings and just kind of continue moving on?
Yeah, so the grant is actually, I think at the beginning, if I remember correctly, because it's been a few years, I think I agreed to making sure that we could get eight people, a minimum of eight people, to the trainings. And so the grant is really to fund the subs so that three times a year, those eight people can go and get the PD necessary, and then it's kind of a train-the-trainer model that comes back. So the idea, ideally, the hope would be that then we're trained and we're speaking that language and bringing it back to our staff, and so there wouldn't necessarily need to be that funding any longer. There isn't really any material supply or anything like that that would need to be consistently funded. We are using a program this year called SWISS, which is, we didn't use. At first, we were thinking we're going to use Campus, and that is something that is a cost, comes at a cost, but it's very minimal. Like, I think it's $350 once they do start charging us. But what it does is it tracks behavior events, both positive and mishaps, and categorizes them of where did it take place, you know, when did it take place, so that you can actually look at your data and then make system decisions about, okay, we are finding that we're going to need some more staffing in, out at recess, because it seems to be that that's where the most conflict is happening, or whatever it may be.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Nice to hear. It's kind of a self-sustaining model, I think North Trail has, has used PBIS in the past or maybe still does, embedded into the culture. And then, Mr. Nelson, this is more of a comment. I thought that, you know, my kids go to your school, so I will just say the learner-led conferences were probably better this year than prior years, honestly. And there was two years of disruption, but I remember when my 15-year-old was a sixth grader, our first experience was, and honestly, he's still the one-syllable answer kid. It was torture, to be honest with you. But, you know, Evan and Ella, who are there now, were so much better prepared to leave. Part of that's because they're just more expressive kids anyway, but they were really much better prepared for it. And this year in particular, we did wander around and go meet with other teachers, and that opportunity was, it was just excellent. We hadn't had it in the past. And so, anyway, thank you for kind of making those adjustments and making that a much more valuable experience even for parents. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Nelson, one thing I wanted to add is that I really liked the name of the Dodge Dish. I don't read newsletters, nor have I ever received any, but I think it's a fun way to kind of brand the newsletter, kind of bring in those families, so the creativity is cool.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our next item in Reports and Communications is an update on World's Best Workforce Data and Assessment Overview with Chris Bussman, Lisa Edwards, and Bill Risto.
Good evening. We are here to talk a little bit about World's Best Workforce. It's time for that annual review. As you know, World's Best Workforce is held in Minnesota State statute, and so we kind of go by that. And I know they made lots of changes. I think you talked, Mr. Bussman, about the annual report.
Yeah. And so, we did hold our community meeting on September 20th, and we do that through our IPR process, kind of shared the results of the goals that we had established last year. This last legislative session, because this does exist in statute and it's required of all Minnesota school districts, there was some contemplation about completely overhauling World's Best Workforce to only focus on that third-grade literacy. Ultimately, did not come to fruition, but something that I was a little bit curious is, as I was preparing our draft report, is last year it was in the neighborhood of 48 pages that we submitted to the state. This year, I think it'll be in the neighborhood of maybe six. So they completely changed what it is that they are asking us to put time and effort into reporting back to the state. In my short three years, not once have we received any feedback on what we submit. So it was a little bit of a welcome surprise.
That might be the first time I've ever heard of a reporting process resulting in less paperwork.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think I'll inquire about it, but I'll just go with it.
Keep your head down, Chris.
And we appreciate Becky and Andy talking a little bit about kind of that ground-level work that takes place, because truly, when we talk about like a district-level World's Best Workforce plan, really, it's about how does this get disseminated down into the buildings, into the grade levels, and at that learner level? And so, a lot of their operational plans, they just briefly touched on a lot of the things that they are prepared to do, but a lot of that, again, is guided through our district strategic framework, which is connected to our World's Best Workforce, and then our district goals, our Building Q Comp goals, the individual growth and development goals, and then down to the grade-level things that take place.
And a few years back, we started putting World's Best Workforce just out on the school website with all the information put there and easy to access. And so, what we do every year is we take those goals, like Mr. Bussman said, to our IPR, and then we just go through the process of making sure that we've updated all the components of World's Best Workforce. So I think tonight, we're just going to just quickly share, there's not a whole lot of changes that have been made, but just a few to be, take notice of. One of the changes is, and I can't remember if we've talked about this at school board meetings in the past yet or not, is the fact that English Language Learner has now changed in the state and has turned to multilingual learners, just because it's more of a strengths-based way to describe our multilingual learners and what they're bringing to the table. And so, you'll see that through, we have changed the language in World's Best Workforce to actually complement that and to reflect that change as well. And then, if you look at our five goals, you know, we're still trying to get over COVID, so, and I know Bill Risto is here to talk a lot about the data and share that information, but the one thing that maybe isn't reflected in his presentation is the early learning goal, and that is because our community ed programming, usually we work together on this goal, and they have implemented TS Gold as an assessment system. They've been working on that through the past probably three years or so, and now they feel like they have some good baseline data to start setting goals and working towards those goals. And due to the effects of COVID, they feel that the children coming in are less likely to interact with peers, and their social-emotional skills are farther behind than they were prior to COVID. And so, their goal reflects that they would like to move up two levels. They have a way to measure that in their TS Goal, and so that, I think, I believe it was 24% to 40% of the four-year-olds will move two levels in that TS Goal in interacting with peers. So that really is a goal of our young learner programs that we have in the district, is getting those kiddos together and working together. So those are the main changes to the World's Best Workforce. If you have any questions, we can definitely answer them. Otherwise, we'll let Mr. Risto here dig into the good stuff, I guess.
Just real quick, just to add context, I mean, the intent, if you read it in statute, the intent of World's Best Workforce is to be the district strategic plan. It actually states that in there, so that...
You said to be the strategic plan?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
Okay, thanks. Hey, Bill.
Hi there. Chair Christensen, board. My name is Bill Risto. I am the Enrollment Data and Assessment Coordinator for Farmington Public Schools, and I've got about 15 minutes, 10 slides to go through tonight. It's a high-level summary of our assessment results for the 21-22 school year. Let's see. I also have a slide on additional resources and how we can, if you're interested, how you can dig in deeper, or you can always address things to Mr. Berg, and he can make all kinds of requests of what kind of data he needs from me, which he's very good at doing, so.
Sounds like more paperwork.
Really good at asking questions.
So the four main assessments that we're going to look at today in a little more detail, it's essentially a summary, but MCA, ACT, EP testing, as well as NWEA map. All right, so we're starting off with MCA. MTAS, by the way, is the alternative assessment for MCA. MCA is a state-required assessment that we take every year, primarily grades 3 through 8 and once in high school. The subject's reading and math, and then it's handled all grades 3 through 8 and then once in high school. Science is done at the 5th and 8th grade, and typically at 10th grade, but science is based on coursework, so it's not always necessarily 10th grade when it's taken. With that said, our numbers are up, or the numbers up on the screen primarily are down. The state, and that's particularly in reading and science, state results are also down in reading and science. Math has a slight rebound year over year, looking at both the state and at Farmington. And I think that's because last year's results were so down that a rebound was likely. There's definitely more room for growth in that. These numbers that you're looking at here, Farmington is in orange, and this is the percentage of students that are deemed at or above the proficiency level for the state. That, this number is taking those students at that level divided by the number of testers. So we'll talk about opt-outs in a little bit. That certainly always affects our numbers, but I've got a slide that we can talk about that. But essentially, yeah, and the one thing I always bring up is, you know, each test, it's one day in time. It's what a kid did on a particular day. So, I mean, it's valuable for that kid and as a population. However, I just need to caution and remind everyone, as I need to caution and remind myself, that we can't look, it's more about the kid and not as much about an average, right? So just something to keep in mind. Couple of things that we look at and around special populations and ethnicity. One of the areas that we do tend to exceed the state average is in special populations, so the English learner, now multi-language learners, special education and free students that are eligible for free and reduced meals, we consistently exceed state averages in those areas. One area of ethnicity, and again, here, I don't want to read too much into this because it's a, you know, a population of one of our groups, but our Black or African-American students this last year, again, these results were from tests taken in spring of '22, more than doubled the percentage at the state level for math. So it came in at, I think they came in at 43% of those students were at or above level, whereas state was 20.1%. So just, you know, there are areas that are good in different populations, and there is some encouraging signs in there. However, for the most part, scores can, scores were a little down. Let's see. Participation, this is always kind of a fun topic. 2019-20 was COVID. They didn't administer MCA at all that year, so nothing happened. Year before that, you see those numbers. 2021, we were in the midst of distance learning. MCA can only be administered in person, so a number of our distance learners chose not to come in for that. So our numbers were down pretty low for that. 21-22, our numbers rebounded somewhat, not quite to the 2018-19 percentages. I will say that at the elementary level... I will say that at the elementary level, the MCAs are priority to parents and students, and we had 97% participation at that level. As we move into middle school, and especially into high school, it's not deemed as important. And we don't, we have a lot of parents that opt their students out. And that's reflected in the overall percentage.
So I've had, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
On the opt-out, I've heard differing answers to this question, whether opt-outs affect the baseline score. Years ago, I was told that the opt-outs are counted as insufficient. I think I've also then heard that that's not necessarily the case. What's the, what's the right answer?
Yeah, so I think the correct way to say that, and I've yet to see the state use the, use that against us in the percentages. However, the correct nomenclature around that is the students that do not take the test are not considered proficient.
So that does or does not show up in the score?
It depends on what you look. I think they threatened, I think the state threatened that they were gonna say that for that bottom number for the denominator, they were gonna take all of the eligible testers and make that part of your percentage. I've yet to see a statistic where they've made that.
They haven't actually done that.
I think they threatened that and then kind of pulled back based on...
So thus the confusion in the terms over the time that I've probably asked about it, okay.
Yep, yep. So then these, the numbers that I showed previously, that those percentages of proficiency, that all takes the number of testers into account, it's not...
The number of tested is the denominator, not the number of students. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, they've tried numerous different things to add value to the assessment, especially at the high school level. They tried to connect it to post-secondary classes and things like that. It's just, I mean, for most students, as Bill talked about, as they get older, it holds less and less value. And I think to your, you know, your question, Chair Christensen, you know, when you start to look at, you know, 85%, 88%, 76%, back to what Bill talked about, right, that the score really only has value for the individual student, because when you start to put, you know, big pieces together, and you're missing 15%, or you're missing 12%, or you're missing, you know, 24%, at what point in time is it not statistically significant? It gives you ideas, it gives you information, you know, that you can use, but it becomes more and more difficult to say that...
It seems to raise more questions like, you know, who's opting out, right? And understanding the population of who's opting.
Yeah, and we ran some of that, I think, if I'm wrong, that it fairly matches our demographics, kind of percentage-wise, of who's opting out. Now, we haven't really dug into like what level learners are at, but more demographically what it's at.
Well, that's what I mean, demographics will tell you one thing, but their typical performance will tell you quite another, right? And that will have a different effect on your head.
Most certainly, you know, I mean, I can speak for my own son, when he went through, both of my kids went through, right, if they were taking an AP exam, or they were taking something else, that took precedence than the MCA, you know, math test. And they both would have been proficient in MCA on their math test, but they had something else. So again, it all, it depends on what it is. So it's, again, it gives information that can be used to help guide things, especially, you know, we're talking about elementary literacy and, you know, where you have, you know, 97% of your kids at third grade, that gives you better information, but as we go up through, it becomes more and more difficult.
Do you think that has an effect then? Because if you look at the impact of scores from K through 5, it's pretty good, you know, it'll pretty well align with the state average, if not better in some cases. And then in middle school, it's kind of okay and drops a little bit, then by the time you get to that, whatever, 10th grade, if you're taking it, that's where the score really seems to...
Yeah, I had the, I printed off the, by grade level. Elementary, it's, to your point, it's, you know, pretty close to majority of the kids are taking it. Once you reach middle school, you're at double digits, and I think once you get to that, it really doesn't give you much information about, you know, what you're seeing. When you try to put it all together as a whole, and it becomes more difficult. But that's with any assessment, right? That's not just, you know, this assessment. I think when you use it, and it's supposed to be a system check, when you have more people that are part of the system, for whatever reason, not taking it, it makes it harder for you to use it as a system check.
Why do we think we score so much higher in special populations?
That's an excellent question. I don't know how much of that is what we're doing, which are obviously, we're doing some good things, or maybe things that in the other parts of the state are not doing as well, is a factor as well. That's a good question.
One thing I'd like to add to the whole opting out, from the high school perspective, I actually took some of the MCAs last spring, and kind of that word of mouth from my peers, and I understand what they were saying, I didn't actually, I ran out of time to ask my parents, but a lot of it was like, get your parents to call you out, because you could, like, it's just another test, whereas it's not linked to our future or post-high school plans. It just seems like another test. I mean, I don't know if this is true or not, so it's not even saying it's true, but a lot of people were saying like, oh, this is based on how much Farmington teachers get paid, or blah, 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 it doesn't affect us at all. I, yeah, but...
That's not true.
Yeah, so there's no...
Yeah, I've read a lot of rumors too, yeah.
...for, other than just kind of seeing that. And so there's so many students who just kind of click through them anyway, which just leads to that lower score, they just want to get out of the class. And so that's kind of why at the high school, where since we already take so many tests, and even middle school, some kids are thinking about that, we already take so many tests and things like that, that here's just another one that actually does not affect us, is what it seems like. And that's kind of why students just like, Mom, can you call me out? Or opt me out?
Yeah, I would just say from personal experience, I probably haven't taken like an MCA or NWA since like maybe seventh grade-ish, because I just don't think, on the student level at least, there's not as much of a, like Kennedy said, there's not much of a desire to do it, because, oh, you could, yeah, you could spend the whole day taking a reading MCA, or you're in high school, you can go get food with your friend, you can go to Cane's with your friends or something like that. So it's just kind of different priorities for different age groups.
And it feels like we kind of get that reflection through our grades too, which is a kind of like, here's another test, just, we already have our grades.
One thing I will say, it's better to have a student opt out than to race through the test, because we cannot invalidate tests that are finished. Because I saw some tests where kids were taking it in less than 15 minutes.
Yeah, it's kind of a funny thing, right? Because I know the MCAs are required to be administered, but they're not required to be taken. And so ultimately, the question becomes, you know, these are kind of specific questions, but the questions for our community members is, when I look at the Minnesota report card, what am I supposed to do with that? And that's, I know we've had that conversation, Jason, and trying to find better ways to measure with competency-based learning and some of the things that you're doing around learning and classroom design, how do we, you know, if we're redesigning that, how do we recreate the better measure, right? Because ultimately, that's the, you know, business world or anywhere else, the money follows the proven success model.
I just, one thing I wanted to say too, just from a teacher perspective and teaching in a district that also does MCAs and things, is that students opting out in large numbers is not like a rare, that's not a rarity, like every district has that. And like Bill said, it's one day and it's one moment in time and it's one test. And personally, from a parent perspective too, I put more, not that there's not valuable data in the MCA, but for me, it's the NWA, where it's an individual student growth, and it's not, you know, it's them, you're comparing what they did in the spring or what they did in the fall to their growth over the year versus that of the state average. And I feel like, I hope, parents remember that too, but not that there's not stock in the MCA, but students opting out and parents opting out, I feel like once they took graduation requirements away from it years ago, it just lost its value and parents realized that, so.
Yeah, regarding the question around subgroups, you know, one of the correlations I can draw is probably 15 years ago, we were probably not dissimilar to a lot of districts, in that when we identified learners that maybe didn't match their whole group peers, so take a group of special ed learners that maybe were performing at a different level, what we simply did is we created different pull-out courses for them. And then the instruction matched kind of a lower level of where they were performing, so they didn't have access to really a lot of these rich learning experiences that were taking place. And so we removed as many students out of pull-out math classes and pull-out reading classes that we felt like we could go to a team top model. So then we created clusters of learners, provided additional teacher support within a mainstream classroom, and then built that model piece of it. I would say that most recently at Dodge, our multilingual teacher worked with all staff on multilingual strategies, because they're not just good for our multilingual learners, they're good for all of our learners. And so kind of applying a lot of those strategies in these experiences that didn't take students out of some of the regular programming that we're doing.
Thank you.
All right, so that is MCA. ACT, so ACT, we were required as part of college readiness by the state, we're required to provide that during school hours, once during the high school experience, right, so throughout the four years. We tend to give our tests to juniors, we have the ACT, they, we set aside pretty much a whole day for ACT, and that is done in the spring typically, although COVID, you know, that was our, typically for our juniors, COVID year, we had to have them test in October of their senior year. So this first slide here is kind of giving you an idea of how many times each student takes the test. We had 451 students from the graduating class of 2022 that took the ACT. 366 of those took their only ACT test at Farmington. We had for, and if you look at the graph, one of the more telling drops is you'll see the blue, like, so, let me explain this with numbers. So this last year, we had 80 students take the test more than once. Previous year, only 44. The five years before that, the average amount of students that took it more than once was 187. So ACT was disrupted, and I don't know how many of you saw the communication, I wrote it down because I wanted to read the quote from the article. "The ACT standardized test scores hit record lows not seen in decades," was what the article said, and I believe it. I definitely believe that, and so moving on...
Can I just hold you one second? So of all the stuff that, I looked through this, the number of kids that only took it once was shocking to me, because if you, you understand how the ACT works, and this is where there's nuance, right? I mean, when they talk about the average ACT score going down, well, if less kids are taking it more times, or not taking it as many times, that makes sense. Because one of the strategies with the ACT is to take it multiple times, because a lot of places will take your super score, you know? And so if I go and I do really well in math, you know, reading and science, and I need to do the other one, well, then I just go take it a second time and only focus on that one, because I already have these three banked. So it's interesting, but we've also seen, right, the decrease in learners going to four-year schools as well, so it kind of matches that. But if you have less kids taking it more times, it's not shocking or surprising that the composite score would go down, also giving the fact of the disruption of the last two years. But when he shared out the number of our kids that only took it one time, I was, I literally was shocked by that. That was very, very surprising.
Yep, and so this slide kind of goes through our scores. And again, this is a class of 2022, so these students, for the most part, would have taken this in April of 2021, right? We have people that take it up, and I always have to take some of these numbers with a grain of salt, because we always have kids continuing to take the test into their senior year, so I always have to add to the data, and it's a kind of a moving target because of that. But if you look at these scores, so these are average scores, we split it up in the orange for Farmington, for those who took it only once, and then we took the top score for those who took it multiple times, right? And as you can imagine, with only 80 kids taking it once, or not more than once, the, our overall averages are not much different. I think it's all within, within a single point of the top score, or the combined score versus the top score. If you look at the combined versus the one time only, it's not a very big difference. We are down, but everyone is down. Advanced placement, I'm encouraged by 24.7 of our graduating class, this is 2022 as well, at one time during their career, got a three or better on an AP test. So that's a quarter of the kids taking advanced class and succeeding at them. That's up slightly from the previous year, which was 22.3, I believe. So it's up a little bit. The score in orange again is over the high school career. If you look at the scores in yellow, that's just a snapshot of this last year by grade of how many kids took an AP class. And one of the things I really like about how we handle AP courses, so if a student feels like they're of the ability, and they have the desire to take an advanced placement course, they're able to take the course. That's, you know, that's something that we allow, and I think a lot of kids are taking advantage of that, and that's very important, especially as they get ready for college And then the last, last slide is the NWEA MAP. And one of the things that, that we like about this as opposed to MCA, one of the problems with the MCA, it provides some good data, you know, with those who take it. However, we get the, we just sent home the results for last year with, you know, at conference time this year. Teachers can't do anything with that. And that's where NWA MAP, we're able to take a kid, see where they're at, and then be able to, you know, have that goal of what's normal growth and try and exceed that as they, as they go through. And the teachers then can see that and are able to then adjust and actually use that data to do something for not just their student, but also for their class. This particular chart is reading, and the orange is fall, again, it's an average, right? Fall average RIT, and RIT is, stands for rash unit, it's basically a scale score that they, that they use. Fall is orange, yellow is spring, and the important thing with this is you see the difference, right? So every, every gap between the orange and the yellow bar means that's how much our average student has grown on average. The green and the, it's kind of a reddish-brown line for spring and for fall and spring, that's the 2020 norms that NWA comes up with. And what that is, is it's millions of scores nationwide where they take and look at these tests and see, okay, where, where does that 50th percentile lie, and where does that compare? And we're right on target with those. For, if you look comparing to 2021, 21-22, now this is, this is, this particular chart, this is average RIT, but more importantly, if you look at growth and the amount, the percentage of kids that hit normal or accelerated growth, let's see, I'm not gonna mess these up. For elementary, 7.3% improved, so we had a 7.3% spike from 2021 to 21-22. Middle school level, that was 2%. And then, let's see, let's go on, we've got the same thing for math. Math was 2.9% for elementary and 1.7% for middle school. So we are seeing growth, again, the math numbers are in line. One thing with MCA, I don't know if I mentioned it, but we were slightly up for MCA math overall, as was the state. So reading took a bigger hit, but yeah, I think I did mention that, so. That's, if there are any questions, that's pretty much all I had. I did want to advertise that for MCA, NWA, and I believe ACT, all of that information is available on the parent portal, so people can go and look at a very high level what their, what their scores are in there. Also, every year we provide the, well, every year in the spring, we provide the NWEA printout for each family, but teachers, that's available to teachers throughout the year, and it's something that, you know, that we can be sharing with our, with our learners and their parents, and it's some very helpful information in that. The website, all things testing, it's under learner assessments, if you ever have any questions. And then I'm available for questions, and I know if there's anything that you need, any type of information or things, you can go through Jason, and I can get him the data that you need.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you, Bill. All right, thank you, Bill.
Yep.
With that, can I get a motion for acknowledging receipt of reports and communications?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Coletta, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Our last, let's see, is that right? Our next item on the agenda is action on a number of policy items, 407, 410, 412, 601, and 603, which were reviewed at the work session. Who owns this?
I, yep.
Take it away.
Yep, third and final reading for these policies, and I know I detailed those out the last time that we talked, in terms of changes from the MSBA, but nothing that changes our current focus. So if there's any questions?
Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I can motion to adopt policy 407, employee right to no exposure to hazardous substances, policy 410, family medical leave policy, policy 412, expense reimbursement, policy 601, school district curriculum and instruction goals, and policy 603, curriculum development as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dentinger, second by Doyle, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our policies have passed. Our last item on the agenda is board remarks, so I'll start down at that end with Michael.
Nothing really else to say, just false, false, sports season coming to an end, make sure to support the Tigers on their way as their season concludes.
Go Tigers.
I just want to thank everyone for showing up tonight, and especially these principals, and last, last month, too, for kind of stepping in and showing us what's happening at the other schools that we don't get to visit, so, kind of cool to see from the outside perspective.
Yeah, I thank you for those that came to present. We always appreciate hearing what all the different schools are doing, because we're, you guys are always doing different things at different buildings, which I appreciate. The only other thing is just to encourage the community to do your due diligence, elections are coming, so get to know the school board candidates and what they stand for before you go out and vote.
Rebecca?
Yes, thank you once again to all the presenters. It is wonderful hearing about all the information and all the activity going on in the, the schools, and of course, Bill, hearing about our kiddos, that's always good. Like Jason had mentioned, there's so much going on for our schools for fundraisers and things of that nature. So I really want to say thank you to all the families out there, the parents, you know, extended family members, because grandparents love to support, so thank you to them as well. We, we have had a lot of PTP things going through the pipeline, so just thank you to everybody, because I know everybody's got their own schedules with sports, or other club activities, and going back and forth, and it can be quite hectic. The one thing that I would just like to do a friendly reminder on is I am one of those parents that pick up a child after activities at the high school, and we all get frustrated because kids love to talk, and you're sitting there forever waiting for them to come out of that building. And so just a friendly reminder, if you're a student leaving the building, or a anxious parent that's hungry, that's trying to get home, or has a crabby kid that came out of the school, just be careful about your speed limits going through that front passway in front of the high school, because I've seen a couple of close calls, whether it's between cars, or a student coming out between two cars that a driver going past can't see them. So please be very, very, very cautious of safety, whether it's another car, or I would hate to see something happen to a student coming out of that building, because we all get frustrated at night if we've had a long day, so just a reminder, we got to take it slow in that front area. Really excited for upcoming events, Patriotic Day, if you've never come, please join us. It is a very, very fun event, and that is, once again, November 10th at 5:00, it starts. The indoor marching band has their final performance, they ranked third in state, very, very proud of those kiddos. That is tomorrow at 7:00 PM, there is a $5 ticket charge. I encourage, if your kids are in band or not, it is a great performance, so come and support, it's wonderful. And then, once again, first time I ever went to this was last year for the waffle brunch that the band puts on the band booster, which does amazing things for the kids that participate in all forms of band, whether it's marching band, jazz concert. That's November 6th, from 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. Just, a lot of community members come, so just be patient as you're waiting in line to get that first waffle, but I guarantee that it is worth the wait. And it's great to see and have your kids wait on you, let's be honest about that, if you're a parent. And there's a silent auction, you can't go wrong with stuff like that. And a huge shout out, last but not least, to Rogue Robotics, they won their invitational opener, it's just all of, there was about 25 teams that came together in Roseville, and they competed with their bots from the previous year, and I'm very proud to say Farmington, number one again, so. Very proud of our kiddos, they put a lot of work into those robots. But all the kids that come together in this competition, it's all about collaboration and helping each other, no matter what team you're on, and that, to me, is just really impressive to see when these teams get together, because our team at regional competitions have needed help, and there are teams that have come that have given us, whether it's a part that we've needed, just, you know, happy to help us, and we are always happy to help other teams. So it's just, it's a wonderful thing to see just all of the kids, whether you're on the same team or not, collaborating together to compete, you know, have their robots show. So very just proud of them, it's kind of their kickoff to the season, so very happy with them, so. That's what I have.
I haven't had dinner yet, so you're talking about like community dinner and waffle breakfast?
Let's talk about the community dinner again.
Yes.
And since food is so important, everybody touched on it, but, but really Patriotic Day is, is an amazing event, and the only thing we didn't talk about was food, usually we serve pork chops for that, but we upped our game a bit this year, and so it's steak dinner with everything that goes with it, and I know they'll be cooked right. If anybody's ever been to the VFW for a steak dinner, they know how to cook a steak, and they know how to do it correctly for a lot of people, this will be the biggest one they do, but the VFW is going to do all of that for us, so.
Steak.
It's going to be spectacular.
Nice.
I'll defer to you if you want to talk about food.
No, yeah, no, thanks again for, thanks for coming to share what's going on in the schools, and for sharing the data and answering our questions tonight. I just had one thing I wanted to talk about real quick, and that's what Jaclyn touched on, too, the election's coming up. So I wrote a few talking points, so pardon me if I'm reading, but, you know, this is the end of, near the end of my second camp, second year on the board, and I, I'll say I had a pretty good idea of what this job was about when I campaigned, and I will tell you, it has been humbling, and at times, at times, at times and always educational. I very much value the relationships I've got with, with the administrators, our teachers, and, and so many of our community members over the past couple of years. I'll say that this board has faced some tough issues from the pandemic-era policies to updating the memorial policy last summer, offering direction on, you know, the financial and academic support challenges facing the district. And when I look left to right, normally I see five other faces, and the student board members, tonight I see three, but I will say that we all have different and diverse backgrounds, and each of us brings a, a different perspective and a unique approach to how we approach each one of these conversations. Really, at the end of the day, our unified focus has always been on what's best for students, and what's best for this district as a whole. For the community, I know that you're going to make some good choices in this election. I've enjoyed getting to know the candidates, I encourage you all to do exactly the same thing, get to know where people are coming from, and then vote for the one, two, or three candidates you believe are really best prepared to tackle the, really, the full range of issues that face our district. For the candidates, whether you're here in the audience or not, I'm praying for each of you. I've been in your shoes, and I know the range of emotions you've felt since the beginning of August. There's just two more weeks to go, and so I really do wish you the best of luck, and win, lose, or draw, you put your, you put your, your name out there, and you stepped into the arena to help lead this district going forward, so thank you. That's it. Can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dentinger, second by Coletta, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.